States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I don't think so. Okay. All righty. All right, so the first item that we're going to be talking about is the consent agenda. Mr. Tang?
I would like to move letter F off the agenda for discussion.
All right, so we have a motion to pull letter F. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, so letter F is pulled for discussion. We'll have a brief fight among them a little bit later. So, all right, so consent agenda then approve maybe two twenty twenty-three Homestead County Board Minutes. The Collaborative Resource Education Service Center and Technology Compact and Bylaws. Letter C Contract Award for Contract Number Twenty Twenty-three dash one-one-six at the Homestead Waste Energy Facility Boiler Three Great B three G Restock. Letter D Appoint Commissioner Wright to the South Zumbro Watershed Joint Powers Board. Letter E Change Order for the Justice Space Remodel Mechanical Scope. Letter G Approve Temporary On-Sale Liquor License for Viola Gopher Count Incorporated. Letter H Update Contracts for Local Forty-nine Homestead County Waste Energy Facility Employees Association. Letter I Approve Resolution Concerning Landlord Letter of Consent from U.S. Health Resources and Services Administration. Letter J SMB Disability Solution Licenseure Change. And Letter K Licenseure Process Change.
Motion approved, the consent agenda is modified.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, so the consent agenda is approved. Let's go back to letter F. So how do you, how would you like to deal with letter F?
Well, just make the board aware that before letter F, we, we have a proposal that's significantly over our budget, uh, our budget for that, for that work. And I think we need to learn more and discuss this more thoroughly. I don't know that we're prepared to do it today, but that would be a...
I'm looking for a motion to table until June twentieth.
So, second.
All right, so I have a motion to table until June twentieth, and which we will bring it back and hopefully have a decision at that time. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, the, uh, letter F is table to June twentieth. Okay, uh, let's see here. Then we have number four, Homestead County Opioid Settlement. Well, Mr. Grant, is he going to update us on that?
Well, good evening Chairman Wright, Commissioners. My name is Travis Grandzi and I am a Deputy County Administrator Supporting Health Housing and Human Services. I have the privilege tonight to share some information with you in regards to a lot of work that's been done. I'm, I'm pinch hitting. You know, the, the folks that have been doing this work and that are a lot closer to this work aren't here tonight. And I'm happy to share the information and also want to acknowledge that Denise Daniels and Abby Tricker have really led this work. So I'll be sharing some information with you tonight. And I'd like to start, um, let's see now, I gotta figure the clicks out here. There we go. I'd like to start just by sharing with you some of the, zoom out a little bit and talk just a little bit about the challenge. I know that all of you are very familiar with what the challenge is that we're facing and, and probably how we've landed in the position that we are today that we're talking about an opioid settlement. But I just want to highlight some of the data. And as you can maybe see on this graph, uh, the, the, I think the biggest piece here to pay attention to is the gray line that's going up a disproportionate rate to the other lines. And that is our synthetic opioids, um, other than methadone, so primarily fentanyl, right? And that's primarily what we're talking about when we're talking about the opioid epidemic. The other thing that I want to highlight for you, um, is we're sharing kind of the national lens is a, a perspective around access. You've heard that Homestead County has been designated a high intensity drug trafficking area. And one could assume that based on that trafficking data, uh, that the access to those drugs probably mirrors the information that you see on, on this chart here. What, what you're looking at here is all the counties across the nation that are highlighted have been identified as high intensity drug trafficking areas. And I think here it's important to note that two-thirds of the United States population resides in a high intensity drug trafficking area. So really what you see on the map is those areas that are most populated, uh, in, in states across the nation. And Homestead County is included. This, uh, just to note too, that this, uh, data is from twenty twenty-two, so it is a little bit dated, but, um, I think, so access to opioids is certainly, um, is, is there in our community. As we kind of zoom in a little bit closer, well, much closer to Homestead County, what you're looking at here is a graph that depicts the number of fatal overdoses that have occurred in Homestead County. The dark blue, uh, on that graph are those overdoses related specifically to opioids, which, um, as you can see in the data there, it's about eighty percent of our drug overdoses are related to opioids in Homestead County. It's also worth noting that, um, you know, despite that trend that you see there, we still also trend lower than the state average and lower than the national average for drug overdoses per one hundred thousand population. Just slightly lower than the state average, I should note, um, but considerably lower than the national average. So that's a little bit about like the environment in which we live and the things that are happening locally in our community. The next slide, we'll talk just a little bit about the opioid settlements. It's, uh, multi-district litigation, so there's cities and counties involved and the state is also involved. The county attorney's office would certainly be able to share some additional details in regards to how all this played out. But Homestead County did make a decision at one point in time to be a litigant in this process, and that's what started us down the path that we're on today where we've got a settlement and now we're talking about how to, uh, invest those funds in our community to address this epidemic. So the first agreement, as you can see there, is for three hundred and three million dollars over eighteen years. The second agreement, which just came about in December of twenty twenty-two, was for approximately two hundred and thirty-five million dollars, and that one's over six to eight years. And those numbers will be important as we kind of continue on here because I know some of you had questions in regards to like, uh, how does the money come in and how should the money go out? So that's, that's an important piece to, to note, that everything here is not on the same timeline. Oops, let's see.
Skipped one.
Did I skip one?
Yep.
Kind of, uh-oh, I probably skipped two. There we go. So, um, as we look, you know, again, then at the Homestead County piece, uh, it, it, right now it's seven point six million in total, and the total is in quotations there, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. But that then, uh, four point two million from that first settlement, around two hundred and thirty-three thousand a year, and three point four million from the second settlement, around four hundred and twenty-five thousand a year. And that was based on the eight years. Again, um, it, as you noticed on the last slide, it said six to eight, so. Maybe I'll skip, well, I won't skip ahead. I think that the first bullet there is important to note, assumptions and knowns and unknowns. All those dollar amounts are, um, at least at this point, um, those are, uh, a really good guess, I think is the best way to put it. The county attorneys that are in the room would be able to share a little bit more, but some of this, um, there's a potential that some of it gets tied up in additional litigation. There are some cases that have settled, there are some that have not, and there are some that are somewhere in between. So these are the settlements though that we feel pretty confident in, at least at this point in time. So I do think that for our planning purposes, the dollar amounts that we're sharing with you tonight are, are ones that we can feel pretty confident that those are the dollar amounts that we should be considering, at least at this point in time. And if there are additional settlements, obviously, uh, those will be brought back to you for your consideration. I don't know, did, did you guys have anything to add to that part of things as far as? Okay. So as you'll see there then, um, year one through eight, uh, will receive approximately six hundred and fifty-eight thousand, and then year nine through eighteen, it'll be around two hundred and thirty-three thousand. And at this point in time, we have eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars that is sitting in a dedicated account, uh, for the opioid settlement funds then. That's how much Homestead County has received to date. We expect our next payment in July of twenty twenty-three. And as of a couple of days ago here, we weren't, we weren't certain, uh, what dollar amount to expect in that next payment. So we'll learn about it probably in real time as it happens. A little bit of the background on the limitation of the funds, uh, they have to be used only for future opioid remediation activities and costs incurred after the settlement date. And public health departments have been determined to be the chief health strategist or the chief strategist as we determine, uh, the best things to do in our community to have an impact on this epidemic. So as it notes there that public health will convene multi-sector meetings and lead these efforts, um, and a number of those meetings have already occurred, and that's what's brought us to the point that we're here today to share, uh, the recommendations from those multi-sector meetings with all of you. The next slide identifies the core abatement strategies. Uh, the, these were, uh, developed by John Hopkins, Johns Hopkins School of Public Health. So there are a lot of counties, uh, across the nation, a lot of municipalities and counties that are using these strategies then to really try to focus on, uh, what areas they should make those investments. And Homestead County has used this Johns Hopkins, uh, model to help guide us in our decision-making around, uh, the most appropriate and impactful ways to have an impact here locally. So as I mentioned before, public health being our chief strategist around this, they convened an advisory group and a core team. The advisory group has a lot of members. It is individuals and organizations across the county, uh, and it, I'll go into a little bit of a definition in regards to, well, I'll just flip ahead real quick here. These are the organizations that were, um, represented, uh, at the advisory group, and then it's a smaller, uh, subset of these organizations that were also, that were then represented on the core team. The difference being the advisory group was really, uh, a broad net to really try to get as much community impact, uh, input as possible. And so you'll see the list here of the organizations that decided to be a part of that. And it's also important to know that there were a lot of organizations that, uh, were invited that didn't, um, end up coming to be a part of those meetings. So I, I just wanted to be real sure that I mentioned that because you'll see, well, like Dover Yona Public Schools was at the table. Well, what about our other schools? Well, they were invited, right? And they either couldn't make the commitment or didn't make the commitment to be there. So the net was cast a lot broader than what you're looking at here. So the, the advisory group then, uh, spent, uh, a lot of time then really trying to hone in then, uh, it, about how, how should we use those funds? What areas should we focus on? And to guide them along with the, uh, core abatement strategies that I already shared, they used these principles, uh, to help make decisions then. Spend money to save lives, use evidence to guide spending, invest in youth prevention, focus on racial equity, and develop a fair and transparent process for deciding where to spend the funding. Excuse me. So those, you know, between the, uh, strategies that I identified and those principles then, uh, that's what these two groups then used to, to try to come up with areas that could have the most significant impact as quickly as possible. This one, uh, really is a snip of a couple of, uh, the feedback sessions where the groups were asked, um, which short-term abatement strategies do we think could have the most impact in a short period of time? That's what you'll see on the left. The one that you see on the right is more for the long-term funding, right? More long-term strategies. Excuse me. And as you see there, uh, all, all of them, uh, ended up focused on, uh, the same four areas, both short-term and long-term. The group thought that the areas around broadening access to naloxone, enriching prevention strategies, funding warm handoff programs and recovery services, and expanding harm reduction programs. They felt like those four areas where we could have the largest impact, uh, on the issues that our, our community is currently facing.
Mr. Grandzi, I mean, I want to put you in an awkward position, and I have heard a briefing on this before, but I'm, I wonder if you could, um, help us understand the language of funding warm handoff programs? What is really meant by that? And expanding harm reduction programs? Maybe you could give us some examples of what those are? And if you can't, I apologize because I know you're not on the core team to, uh, but, but I think, I think for us to understand that would be helpful.
No need to apologize Commissioner Kuske, and that'll be the next four slides, so.
All right. Thank you. Glad you anticipated my question.
So the next slide then, uh, is to talk a little bit, and I will go through all four of them. The first one here is why naloxone distribution. Uh, the, the biggest key here is that, uh, naloxone can rapidly reverse an opioid overdose. And I know you've all heard about naloxone, I know you've heard about its impact, uh, and you'll see a couple of statistics on there that, you know, forty percent of overdose deaths, somebody else was present, and eighty percent of overdoses happen in someone's home. So the idea around, uh, a harm reduction model here in that naloxone can save lives, that's why naloxone was chosen. It seems to be the simplest and easiest way to save lives. The next one is prevention, uh, and these, uh, a lot of these strategies that are identified here, uh, come from both, uh, public health and Dr. Benjamin Lai. Dr. Dr. Lai is a, uh, a, a practicing physician at the Mayo Clinic, and you'll, you'll see in here that some of these really, uh, tie into, um, what prevention strategies our healthcare providers could also be imploring that would really assist with this epidemic. So, um, there's some language, I mean, I think, well, this would be a dual strategy really, a public health prevention strategy and a Mayo Clinic education strategy, uh, where, um, you know, we get into the education, the screening that's mentioned there, the opioid stewardship, um, which is really about managing pain while minimizing risk to addiction. And then it talks there a little bit about, um, harm reduction, and we've already talked about one of those strategies, which is naloxone. Others are in regards to needles and, and how we reduce hepatitis or prevent hepatitis. I mean, some of those are harm reduction strategies. The, the next one too is also around prevention. I mean, I, I do think that, uh, this is probably some data that, um, maybe for many of us, we haven't seen this before, uh, but the, uh, amount of opioids that are being used by the over sixty-five population, you can just see the significant increase that's occurred here, uh, over the last few years. So for folks that have in their mind the picture of, uh, opioid user, uh, being somebody that, um, might be younger or might be on the streets, uh, it's also important to know that there's, uh, this part of the population as well that, uh, is struggling with this same, the same chemical. Next, a little bit about warm handoff, uh, and recovery programs. You can read some of the words that are on the slide there. I'll, I'll share with you a little bit really about what a warm handoff is. I mean, our system, um, and in Homestead County, we have a very effective system. There's still significant gaps in our system from a warm handoff standpoint. And what that means is if, if I decide today that I want to address my addiction and I want to go somewhere and get help, it's very likely that that's not going to happen today. Cause I'm going to have some hoops to jump through and I'm going to have some lines to wait in before I can get into the service or the program that I think that I need for my addiction. So these warm handoffs really then, it's trying to find ways and programs in which we can support people from the day they say, "I need help and I want treatment," to the day they actually get that treatment. And we found that when we support folks in that space, that we've got a much greater chance then of the day that the treatment facility says, "We can get you in today." If we've supported them through that week, days, weeks, up to that point, that's really what the warm handoff is, is to make sure that they've got some support in the community until they get into the program that they need. Cause what we see is that a lot of folks will identify, "I need treatment, I need to stop using." And then by the time we get them the help that they need because of those bottlenecks and those weight lines, they change their mind or something in their life changes. So that's really what a warm handoff is, and there are ways to do that. Next, um, we can, all right, Commissioner Kuske, did I answer, um, well enough your questions in regards to some of those programs?
I don't think you covered, uh, harm reduction programs.
Okay, yeah, I briefly mentioned some of the harm reduction programs too. I mean, naloxone being one of them, uh, there are a number of harm reduction programs just in regards to, uh, whether it be needles or needle exchange, whether it's, um, hepatitis prevention or, uh, or treatment. So it's really, um, harm reduction really is an acknowledgement that, uh, despite the resource that we try to pour into helping people, um, stop using, um, there are also folks that aren't going to stop using, and so how can we help reduce the harm then? And there's, you know, so the strategies that are really around that.
Thank you.
So then we come to this final slide, uh, which really talks about the, uh, strategies that have been recommended, uh, by the, uh, core group and, and the advisory group then. They've come up with, uh, some short-term strategies. I think one thing, um, there's been some pressure building around, uh, what is Homestead County going to do, um, to address this? This is an issue that's here and now, uh, and that we should try to figure out some short-term strategies to get some of this money into the community so that we can address the, the epidemic at hand. And so these were really set up as one-time funds to try to address some, uh, we have a lot of community providers. I mean, that, we are very fortunate in Homestead County that we've got a lot of folks that are working in this space. And to tap into those, to those people then with naloxone distribution and try to address some of those warm handoff and recovery programs and some of the prevention things that we could do. So the short-term strategies then, the idea was to set aside one hundred and sixty thousand of the eight hundred and sixty thousand that we currently have in the, in the bank, if you will, and to try to make those investments right now. And the longer-term strategies, and as I mentioned before, these teams have really landed on the same, the same core areas, uh, to address. So the longer-term strategies again are related in naloxone and the warm handoffs and recovery programs and prevention. And to do that then with a two-year cycle of, of small grants, um, that all of these community providers would, um, submit to, uh, to an RFP, a request for proposals, to submit that information to the county, and then we would make some decisions in regards to which ones we felt like could have the most impact and tie that to outcomes then, uh, from those programs. And that would be, uh, on a two-year cycle, uh, so that we would do the first two-year cycle in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five, and then during that time, continue to evaluate and reevaluate the effectiveness and if we're hitting the mark and if we're making a difference. And, and to kind of continue that cycle, uh, through the, through the terms of, of the dollars that we anticipate coming to the county. So that's, that's it in theory, right? In practice, uh, it would, the hundred and sixty thousand then, we would find existing organizations that could help us carry out those strategies. And then longer term, we'd, um, have a request for proposals, um, available to the community that respond, and then we'd make some decisions from there. So. I think, um, yeah, and here's my summary slide, then we can get it, some questions and have some discussion, but, uh, this was at the Health Housing and Human Service Committee, uh, the last couple of times we met, not today, but the, the previous two meetings. And this information was shared there, and I know the commissioners that were a part of that, um, might have some comments to share.
Mr. Grant?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, sometimes you hear things and you get one level of understanding, you hear it again, you get another level, and so this is the third time I'm starting to get it again. Uh, I'd like to ask you to go back to the slide of the strategies, and I'd like to ask you a little bit about the warm handoff programs. Am I, you know, we have our crisis emergency response folks that go out on calls, um, to the homes, to whatever setting where a crisis is called, and we know that, uh, would, that that has made a difference in de-escalating all sorts of situations, uh, for, that our residents find themselves in. Would that qualify as one of the warm handoff programs?
I, I don't know. Yeah, yes, in part, I think it would. I do think that, uh, you know, that, that team has become, um, they've really, they're doing a lot of different things. And when that team was designed, one of the ideas was that in situations like this where maybe they did respond to a drug overdose, that maybe one of their roles could be, um, to go back to that same house the next day or three days later and check in with the person, um, to see if they were interested in whatever the next step might be. And so that, to build in some follow-up to the program. And I think the reality has become that, uh, they're responding to so many, so many calls, uh, that the, they don't have the time built into the day to actually be as, I don't know that that's proactive, but it's certainly proactive in regards to the next step with that follow-up. So it could be, it, I guess my point, Commissioner Kuske, is I don't know that it is right now, you know? And it could be.
And then how about, um, enriching prevention strategies that, you know, we've, we've heard, we've seen your presentation and we heard something quite similar in the Human Services Committee. My understanding at the time was that it was really focused on kind of broad community education, you know? Not, not a targeted kind of education, um, getting materials out, letting people understand the risk, maybe some of the data you showed us of, of where the deaths are occurring in people's homes and need to be able to use, uh, naloxone or, do we have any definition of what the advisory group is thinking in terms of, of what would qualify as a prevention program that we might fund?
I don't. Well, okay, let me back up because the ones that were identified in the slides, uh, the ones that were more specific to Mayo Clinic, I do think they've done some thinking around what specific strategies and what kind of education they would like to provide, uh, uh, on a more regular basis for their staff. So that part, yes. I'm not, I don't know, um, that all the details though have been vetted with those groups, uh, in regards to the specific, um, prevention or education strategies that they'd use. I know that public health will be involved in part of that, uh, and I know that Mayo Clinic has at least committed to being a part of that as well. I think, um, really as far as the, the group got, uh, was, was kind of what you're seeing now. You know, they've, they've kind of come to some consensus on these ideas and the specifics then, the hope was that we'd hand that back to that group to really dial in on those specific, um, specific pieces then.
So, Mr. Grant, can you have tolerance for another question? So, Mr. Chair, can you have tolerance for another question? So one of the issues then is where, is the intention that this steering committee or this core team would set up the criteria, would do the RFP, and would, would do the evaluations of applicants, and determine which ones would be recommended for, and so we're at, we're being asked to empower that committee to disburse this $800,000?
Yes.
And we, we don't really have any other, that I can think of, any committees that have that direct authority? Can you, can you help me think of one that we'd have?
Yeah, I don't know that I can. I look into my pile, SHIP.
SHIP, SHIP applies for state grants, we approve the application for the state grant. We approve that they apply, and then we approve that we accept. But what I think what you're outlining to us right now is that we would approve these general concepts, and then empower, using the, you know, the language we're learning about community engagement, empower this cross-sector, multi-stakeholder core team to make the decisions and to, on behalf of the county.
Yeah, I do think that that is the, that's the desire and the intent here, is to have the folks that are closest to the work, that know where, where we're doing well, and where we have some gaps that we could improve upon, to actually then follow through with making sure that we have an impact on the community. That is the ask.
And do we have any accountability to the state for, for the, for the funds that are distributed and what kind of outcomes we get?
We do, yeah. We, I believe it's just an annual report that's required then. And what we have to make sure then is that the strategies that were chosen and the money that was invested was directed to specific areas that then have been approved for use for these dollars. The, and that list is, is really expansive. I mean, it's a, I don't know, 40-page document that's sitting on my desk. I mean, there are a lot of approved uses. So I don't have any doubt that all of the things that have been shared with you tonight fit within that list. So yes, we will report back in regards to how the money was spent, and the report back for outcomes, I think, will be something that we will be tracking a lot closer, well, I know, it's something that we will be tracking a lot closer than they will.
So it's, it feels to me like this is an, an important opportunity, and it's an area that we're concerned about, but we're also sending, taking a precedent of how a sizable amount of, of revenue to the county will be allocated for up to three years, this year and two more years. So that, that precedent setting, I think, alone needs a little bit more consideration by the board than to say, you know, you're the experts, you decide, but it's also precedent setting for the board in terms of our budget. It's, it's a form of participatory decision-making, but I don't think we consciously, I think if we're going to do that, we should consciously decide that we want to do participatory decision-making and empower a, a group of advisors to make budget decisions for us.
Well, and I think that the, the core group is really asking to be that group of advisors, and that, you know, that's the strategies that they've come forward with here. And I mean, because I also know that this board has an interest in, in getting feedback from the community, and I think that the, these groups here certainly, especially the larger group, certainly meets that. I mean, we, we've invited a lot of people to come participate in those discussions and weigh in on regards to the priorities, and we've sought a lot of feedback, and we'll continue to do that. I mean, that's the other part. I mean, at some point here, at some point here, this board will make a decision about how to get started on this. And I would advise that however we do that, that we come back every once in a while and make sure that we still feel like we're hitting the mark, and you still feel like we're hitting the mark, you know what I mean? So I don't think any decision that we make today was anything we're going to want to stick with in year 16. I mean, I do think that there will need to be a consistent feedback loop around the investments made and the impact.
Could you go forward to the slide where the allocations are being recommended?
Oop.
Okay, thank you. I, I don't know who, if we're not going to use an RFP process for the quick action, what have we decided to do? We're going to just say to this, this group of, this core team, here's $160,000, and you allocate it however you think?
That is an option. I know it's an, I mean, I, I appreciate the questions, and I think there, you know, questions, some questions that I don't have an answer to, I guess, and, but yeah, the, this, this group, this group of community stakeholders, these are the recommendations that they've asked us to bring forward, and we have, we brought them to the committee meeting, and now we're bringing them here. So that, that is the ask.
Mr. Chair, could I, what, what?
Yes, go ahead.
He's, okay, I'll jump in. You want Dave to go first?
Oh, I don't care, you go ahead. Dave, everybody will have a chance, don't worry.
All right, well, I'll jump in. Thank you. So I appreciate that it was a lot of work to come up with this, but my concern is is that when we have such diverse perspectives giving us this recommendation, and then we bring it down to four, that we're really spreading a net that's too wide, that we can't really accomplish anything of good, we're, we're appeasing this, and this, and this, and this, and at the end, have we really accomplished anything? And this is a, almost a windfall of money that we're, that we want to do good in the community, and I'm worried that at the end, we're going to say, well, we tried, we made a little bit here, and a little bit here, and we really made no difference. And so that is my concern. I, I would like to see this group really focus on something that will see an immediate and long-term difference in this community, and I would go back to the, to our program that, where we do have our social workers embedded in our, in our law enforcement, and expand that program, the number of social workers in the follow-up that you suggested. That's a very successful program, and we've been wanting to expand that, and we've been lacking for dollars on it. Here's dollars, we know it works, why don't we study that further? Oh, one more question since I got the floor. How much does the city of Rochester get, what are they going to do with?
I, I, I'm not going to be able to answer this question as far as like, how much. I knew that number at one point in time, and I don't have it off the top of my head. What are they going to do with it? They're, they're still making that decision themselves. In fact, just late last week, they reached out, they, they do have members that are a part of this team as well, and we're not sure yet, but they are engaging with us now to have those conversations and to see if there's a way that we could do something together.
Thank you.
All right, Commissioner Stenstrom, you had a question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I don't, I don't believe I have a question, maybe just a comment, I think, and thank you for all the people that are out there that may be listening that had anything to do with getting us to this point. But I just, again, just personally as a county board member, this is, this is to me like good work, but, and I don't need to be an expert, but when we talk about distributing the antidote, I'll call it, you know, maybe just a little bit more information about, you know, where that's going, who's going to get it, is it going to be within law enforcement strictly, is it going, we going to have, you know, stands on the street corners that distribute it? I mean, it's, it's, you know what this is probably, but, but maybe, maybe county board members could have little ideas, at least we could articulate it at coffee shops and so on. I'm not sure I quite understand the, the handoff and why we need to spend money on that. If we do, we do, I just, it's like I don't understand it, and prevention's pretty vague. So maybe a little bit more information in that, but what, what I hope can happen, will probably, I'll probably hinge my vote on this actually, is that at the end of all of this, and as we move through all this, I do think the county board has a fiduciary responsibility to, in fact, approve the distributions, whether it's 10 projects on a sheet of paper that say this much money going to this place for this purpose, I do, and whether that's a monthly cycle or an annual, I don't know, but, but I do think a piece of paper coming across this table on, on a periodic basis, as recommendations come forward, is, it's sort of our responsibility, I think, to approve money out of the checkbook, and, and that's, I think, my main interest in what we're talking about tonight.
Okay, Heidi?
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, Travis, do you think, I, I think you're pretty close. If, does it, there might be more than one issue here, but the, the first one that I hear is, wait a minute, we're handing off all the authority to distribute money, but maybe we're just missing a little point, that I think the core group could come back, you know, they could do a whole other thinking, and kind of chewing through applications, for instance, and then come back to the board with, here's, here's what we would recommend, board with specifics that follow this outline, is that, that might even be what the core group was thinking, are pretty close, Travis? I'm thinking you're close, so there, I know there may be other concerns outside of that, but just in terms of, wait a minute, are we handing off all of our fiduciary responsibility or, or not? I think that's probably pretty easily remedied by just saying, yep, core group, go do your, yes, go do your work and come back to us with the full recommendations with the dollar amounts.
Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Jayla? That, that's really what I'm thinking, is that we don't, that precedent setting of, we're, you know, we are collaborating with a variety of stakeholders, we are taking their advice, we want to know, but we still have the responsibility to, to manage the finances, and to know that we're getting outcomes, and that, that we, that we see that there's direct benefit. We also, I think, have to be a little bit careful that we don't have any conflicts of interest in the, in the core team. You know, it'd be easy to, to have the core team have people who are, who see an opportunity to, to further something they're already working on, and this is a new funding source, and I can convince six other people, and then I've got my funding, and that could be a potential conflict of interest. But the bigger thing is, are we getting the results that we, we hope for? What are the results, what the, what are results do we expect? How would the naloxone distribution harm reduction be done? What are the warm handoff and recovery programs? What are we doing for prevention? I think those policy decisions, well, we would certainly want that defined by the core team, the board should be just not go, well, whatever you say. I think there's a, there's a, there's a, there's a step that we can take toward, what are your recommendations? That the board gives the final approval, that we have the direct accountability for the funds received, instead of to something really kind of amorphous and loose. I'm not, I, I don't, you're looking quite somber, and I'm not being critical, I'm just trying to think through the, kind of the next, the next steps here, because we really are talking about, you know, many years, and we're setting the precedent in the way that we're going to go forward with this, for this funding, but once we've done it for this funding, there will be others. So, yeah.
All right.
Travis, if you don't mind if I just jump in, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, one more, just to kind of bring you to the next question. I think that that can, can work, and, and if that's the case, then our real question tonight is, does the board, do you have feedback on, on where this core group has gotten to so far? Do you like the way that they have, they're recommending that we make judgments about how to spend that fu- funding, or are there particular thoughts that you have even now before they go to the point of, of deeper into the process of coming back to you with specific amounts, and I know that's where you might have some other concerns?
Commissioner Rasmussen?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for the third time thorough presentation, there's a lot of information here. Just a couple of quick thoughts. I appreciate, obviously, the time that's gone into casting a wide net to bring, again, the folks that are truly implementing these programs in the community, we're not the experts here, so I agree with what you've done there in bringing them onto the table, and helping to understand the strategy and categories, et cetera. Many of the points that were just brought up by my fellow commissioners can be taken care of in that RFP, and how we write that RFP, and the specifics in the RFP, the metrics, the outcomes, ensuring that all of that's in there, so that those community groups must come back with very clearly defined outcomes and metrics, and if they don't meet our standards, they're not going to be awarded any dollars. So that's something, and there's some things in there that was some further thought in a well-defined RFP, we can take care of some of that. To this point of promoting your own programs, et cetera, that's something that we talked about a little bit in committee, because I certainly see, and I guess have seen in programs like this, we need to make sure that, you know, organizations aren't stepping outside of their current bounds, you know, aren't committing to things that they don't already excel in, but again, clearly, that local knowledge and the knowledge that our county staff and others are going to bring to the program is going to be really important to understand, you know, is that organization even capable of doing what they're said they can do in this RFP? So that's all really important. So I think we do have some more thought to put forth. I like your idea of, you know, short-term, just immediately putting some of this money, you guys already have some clearly defined needs and know some short-term places where you can start impacting with that 160,000, and then taking that 700 elsewhere. But I, I think you've really put together a good strategy, maybe just with some more definition of these outcomes, and a very well-written RFP with clear terms, et cetera. I think we're on the right path. And to also this point, I guess, we also have to think about, we talked about this in committee too, this is a learning journey for all of us, this is going to happen over the next 18 years, and we're not going to get everything right in this first RFP and grant cycle, we're just not. And we have to learn from that and be committed to learning from that, and evolving our processes to ensure that those are, the folks we are awarding the money to are delivering, and we have, you know, everything in place contractually, et cetera, to ensure that we're doing a good job and having great impact with these dollars.
Thank you.
So I have just a couple of questions. I think the, what the city is going to do with their money, I think, is something that we should know about. I mean, if this is running through public health, the city doesn't have public health, so just kind of wondering how that might operate. Secondly, when we, when we talk about harm reduction, you know, the way I would view that is there's harm to the individual, so I can stop the individual from creating harm to themselves, but I also think that there's harm to the community, because there's harm that goes on in the family, and then in the community as well, all right? Because if they end up in the justice system, then that, that's a cost to the community, and that's a concern that we have long-term for that. And so Commissioner Tine and Commissioner Cascaden's already talked about this, but one of the programs that we have, that we know works, is our community outreach. And you even said yourself, they don't have enough time right now, because we only have four, right? But obviously, they could do much better if they had two more. Obviously, they could do better if they had four more, you know, but the idea, of course, is, is that we potentially have some money here to expand that program if that falls within that, within, within the usable amounts that we can do that for, and if, and I don't know if the committee, the core committee considered that, I, I really don't know. So maybe we could bring that back to them and say, well, you know, this is something that, at least I would like considered, I don't know about the rest of the people, but that, that's something that we should have them consider as part of a package for utilizing this to reduce the amount of opioids in the community.
So quick clarification on that point. We are not, we as a county are not precluded from being a part of the RFP, correct? And if, could we, do we put an expansion of the DECO team through the RFP process? Yes, Heidi?
Yes. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, you could, or you could organize it where you just say, you know, we're going to use X amount for this county program, and the rest of it, we're going to put into an RFP process. I think you probably save some time and process, if, if that's what you, if you know that you want to fund a certain county program, you could split the, split the pot.
Yeah, so that's something that we can talk about, but I don't, I, I would like the core committee to know that we're considering that. the core committee to know that we're considering that, so that they're aware.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, if I could, just respond to the community outreach discussion, I know it's come up in a few different areas too, and, uh, I, I don't doubt that the, this team thinks that we could continue to have a significant impact if we invested in that area. There's another strategy for that too, right, which is to consider committing additional levy to that program, I mean, and, but both are options, right? And, and I think this group was really focused on things that we're not currently doing or should be doing more of versus what we've already got in place, and maybe that, there'd be another strategy that, which would be to bring that back to you, uh, to consider during the budget discussions, to address the community outreach, and I, I appreciate your comments too, and I will share that feedback with the, with, with the group working on this, that, you know, that there's strong consideration from this board to make sure that we address our community outreach team somehow.
Ms. Chair, I just observed, we don't know, we should know in a week, um, exactly what's happened in the public safety bill from the legislature, and there was a lot, there was funding that was going to be focused on public safety, and that may be, and, that might be another way that we can get the DECO thing funded, but we just don't even know what's there yet.
That's fair.
Commissioner Tine?
I know, I know this isn't your, your program here, so, I really need to know what the, what the naloxone distribution program looks like, because if it looks like you're going out in the library and you could get one per day, I'm not in favor of it, and I think we need to have that discussion of what that looks like. I don't think our law enforcement's right now is running out of Narcat or naloxone, when they go to, when they go to a site, they assume that they have it, and if they don't, we ought to make sure they do, but if we're talking public distribution as a, come get it, I don't see that as what I want to support.
Yeah, I do, um, I know enough to be dangerous, I know that the naloxone is now a, a medication that folks can buy, I know that for a lot of the, um, people that are using these drugs, um, they don't want to make the investment in the naloxone, uh, so I do, uh, I appreciate your feedback, and I do think that that is, in part, what the committee was considering, is making it more accessible to those folks that couldn't get it on their own. Um, I think a lot of these harm reduction strategies, you know, and, and we can do more to define that for all of you too, and share a little bit more about what those are, uh, some of those aren't going to set well with those of us that haven't dealt with an addiction, and it, so I do, I, I'll challenge a little bit in that what we think, um, will help, uh, isn't what the using community thinks will help, and some of these ideas might be like, whoa, that makes me a little uncomfortable, uh, and that's what our using community is saying helps get them, uh, in recovery, so, anyway, we can talk more about that, and I appreciate your point, Commissioner Tine.
Yeah, great.
Well, I think we should thank the core team for their work and just say we need, we need more detail.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree.
All right.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
You know, it's easy, you know, who, who can't agree with that, but we want to know what we're doing, on the other hand, we've got a, we've got a cri- we all know this, we have a crisis out there, and honestly, this is, relatively speaking, not a lot of money on, on an annual basis, uh, it's, it's pretty modest, and, and, you know, is it enough to even make a difference? I don't know, but my, my point in even mentioning this is that, you know, I think we ought to get it out in the street in, in, in as wise a way that we can, and, you know, this group of experts probably knows a lot bit more about, about where it's needed and how it could be used than I'll ever know, and, so I, I'm certainly willing to trust your experts, at least from my perspective, in, in just getting it out in the street and, and trying to hopefully have some effect with it, uh, I don't need personally to wait a, a long time to figure this out, because I don't think it's that hard, and, and I think there's an urgency out there that shouldn't wait.
And Mr. Chair, Commissioner, how does that fit with your, the fiduciary responsibility of the board? How do you see the two fitting together?
Um, Mr. Chair, and, and, Commissioner, if the experts come to us and say, here's $108,000 on eight projects, and, and they're, and so much, you know, a specific group gets so much dollars, and it's for this purpose, that it comes across this, this table, and if it seems reasonable, I'm, 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 I'm a yes, it's, it's pretty easy, I don't, I don't need to figure this out, I just need, I think, I, I, when I say fiduciary responsibility, I just think when we take money out of the county checkbook, uh, we ought to do it with approval of at least four members of this board.
I just wanted to be clear, that's what I thought you meant, and I wanted, I wanted to be clear what your intention was.
Just, just, we don't need to make this complicated, but I do think, again, when we take money out of the checkbook, it ought to, it ought to be approved by our votes.
All right. Chairman Wright?
Mr. Chair, I just thought I would actually add, I, since Commissioner Tine asked, I looked it up while we've been having this discussion, as to the amount the city of Rochester is supposed to receive, you don't want to hear that information, um, it's, this is, comes from the Minnesota Attorney General's Office website, but it indicates, and it's split into two pots, because there basically were settlements with Johnson &amp; Johnson in one pot, and Teva in another pot, so the Johnson &amp; Johnson pot for the city is 1.5 million rounded, and the Teva pot, it's 1.2 million rounded.
It's over the 18 years?
Yes.
So, it's not a very much money?
No.
For them?
Half, half of what the county is.
Mr. Chair, just an afterthought as well, on, uh, tagging on Senator Cascaden, or, pardon me, Commissioner Cascaden's perspective, but, you know, if you look at the opioid statute, uh, it does speak to an advisory council within state government to oversee this, and it does speak to, uh, that advisory council, uh, submitting to conflict of interest provision, so, it would seem that, to some degree, that our council should do whatever we call this group.
Mr. Chair, just one more comment, if I could, just to kind of respond to Commissioner Senjum's points, I mean, uh, the, the committee does, did take your last comments into account, that, um, we, we need to be responsible, and we need to make an investment that we think is going to have an impact, and we need to do this quick. Um, and, and so to your point, and, and your feedback is noted, and we'll take that back, what we didn't want was to get these decisions, um, kind of ground into the bureaucracy that we, we can, right, and they just wanted to be able to be nimble, be quick, get it in the community and have an impact, I mean, that was, that was their goal, you know, and so, I think the, if, um, and I need to make sure I'm walking out of here with the correct direction tonight, I think, if, if the idea that Commissioner Senjum had suggested was we bring back a more itemized list of how those dollars would be spent, and the strategies and the organizations to which they'd be committed, at least for the short-term strategies, that that would feel, um, then we'd, then we'd feel like we were getting closer to the mark, is what I'm hearing.
And, Mr. Chair, just a comment, I don't want to make this difficult, I just, you know, just, enough so that, I, I'm, I'm a responsible board member.
Understood, I think, I think I got it, I think I have a vision, sorry.
That clarified, and clearly, once you do the RFP process, you will come back to us with a prioritized list of proposals that were evaluated by the advisory board, how you've prioritized them with budgets, and then we could approve that list for the bigger budget.
Yeah. Chairman Wright, Commissioners, we can certainly do that, and, and I appreciate the discussion, and just remember how much staff time all of these things take, so I just don't want to lose sight of that, and I think one of my jobs is to protect our staff from as much of the busyness that everybody feels on a day-to-day, um, and that we can certainly do all of this, and it will take staff time.
Yes.
It will take staff time.
Okay, are there any other last comments? All right, thank you very much, we appreciate that, pass on our thanks to the committee, and, you know, I think that you've heard our discussion, you can relay that to them, so, we know what's going on, we appreciate that very much. And I also want to thank, uh, our county attorney, Mark Ostrom, because he was the first one to bring this to the attention of the county and started the process rolling, I don't know how many, what was that, two years ago? Two, two to three?
More like about six.
Six years ago, thank you very much, how time flies.
I'd be happy to help you spend it if you need it.
Yeah, but anyway, thank you very much, uh, for being aware of that, bringing that to the attention of the county, very good. All right, so, uh, reports, um, Commissioner Senjum, do you have a report? It's not required.
Yes, Mr. Chair, well, just note a couple of things, and, uh, we, we all know this, maybe the public doesn't, but, uh, I thought we had a very good trip over to La Sura the other day, and saw a very interesting process over there related to anaerobic digestion, and, uh, and I think it was a good educational opportunity for us.
Yes, it was.
And, uh, and then beyond that, I'll just, uh, report on, uh, a, a NACO, uh, energy, uh, environment energy steering committee I'm on, and, you know, we, we meet about every month, and, uh, last week, we had one that covered, it was probably not terribly pertinent to us up here, but, uh, it had to do with the disadvantaged, smaller disadvantaged communities and water supplies, uh, water across this country is becoming an ever precious commodity, and there's a good number of cities across the east and even down south, and of course, the west, that, uh, are, are in trouble on water, and, uh, and their future viability depends on, on water, and so it's, it's a great big deal, uh, we don't tend to worry about much up here, is, I don't think, at least in terms of water quantity, we talk about quality, but, uh, it's an important thing, and then, uh, maybe just to, well, I could, I could report on a couple legislative items, but I think I'll just, well, I've gotten this far, I think, you know, I worry a little bit about county program aid, it doesn't seem to be going up at 40 million dollars right now in the, in the tax bill, I worry a little bit about, uh, roads and bridges, uh, relative to, uh, what's, what's happening in the bonding bill, at 21 million dollars for county roads and bridges, uh, each, each 20 million, 21 million, that is, that is a very sparse, if you will, amount of money compared, compared to previous years, and, uh, and we'll feel it, counties across the state will feel it, so it's a concern.
Commissioner Senjum, or, excuse me, Commissioner Rasmussen?
Um, yeah, so I would report off, um, one topic in HHH Committee today, we had two great presentations, one on, um, all of the services that we provide to vulnerable adults in the community, and then the other one was supporting children of incarcerated parents, and when you heard what we heard today, the tremendous, uh, programs that are supporting really the entire family unit, but understanding the impacts, and the data shows very clearly that the impacts of an incarcerated parent, the long, lifelong impacts to those children, and the tremendous, um, programs that we have in place, the passion, um, presented by county staff today, who are, um, delivering those programs every day to children around the county, and continuing to build them, and figure out where we can get more funding, et cetera, was just, um, really energizing today, and, um, I hope that the rest of you can, can learn about those programs also, and understand, um, just how impactful those programs are right now for those children in our community.
Thank you. Commissioner Cascaden?
Following on health, health and human services, last week, I attended the orientation for the newborn members with our family support and assistance team, and I just wanted to say they did a great job of helping, I had to get to stay for the whole thing, helping us understand the complexity of our eligibility determination process, I was very, uh, I thought their, uh, their simulation, uh, was really powerful, I could think of several ways it could maybe be streamlined a little bit or strengthened, in fact, so much so that I, I, uh, shared that experience when I was with the, uh, Association Minnesota Counties Futures Group on, on, uh, Thursday and Friday afternoon, Thursday and Friday morning, and that, um, that group looked deeply at the incoming cannabis legislation, it was in, it was in negotiation of, uh, there were some good reports from, some happiness from the part of the AMC staff, that, that some of the provisions that counties wanted in terms of having some level of funding to deal with cannabis, and some, uh, some limited authority, there'd been, they'd made some inroads, they were also very pleased to report that the work that the association has done for several years, along with MACAC and county probation, uh, had succeeded in kind of overcoming the resistance of the Department of Public Safety around a new formula that will assure, uh, increased funding to counties for, uh, put them all on the same level for probation officers or corrections officers within our, uh, within county government, uh, and, uh, provide a baseline of funding for the most rural counties. We stand to have, uh, around a million and a half dollars a year of new revenue, we're not sure if that's over one year or two, that will help us with our corrections, um, uh, functions, so that was all really, really good news as well. But the thing that I came away with, just excited about, was a presentation that I heard from Ken Smith of Evergreen, um, I have to get the full title of, of the organization, and I really hope that we will invite them, uh, to come and present to us, because as we look at the future of how we're going to manage waste, how we're going to look at environmental issues, um, and what our, our role as a county will be, he's, with Evergreen Energy, um, they operate a district heating, um, facility in St. Paul, they operate a wood waste, um, waste-to-energy facility, uh, there in several cities, and the, somebody that, uh, our good colleague, Dave Senjum, knows well, was in active with the climate sensitive counties, municipalities, CSM.
Climate smart municipalities.
Climate smart municipalities, see those, those acronyms, you never know what it means. Anyway, um, I just think we would, I learned so much, and we're entering into this whole discussion about long-range planning for our, how we manage waste, uh, and how we deal with climate issues, and I, for me, that was a very grounding, um, uh, presentation, and I'm hoping we'll be able to hear him another time. That's it, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Meadler?
I'll report.
Commissioner Tine?
I'll just jump in, I don't have much, but, uh, this whole board was at the opening of the Education Center of Oxbow Park, and it was a great day, and it's a great site, and our esteemed chair gave a great speech, and, and, uh, a good time was had by all, and I learned that we get nearly 400,000 visitors a year to that park, we get approximately 1,000 students a day to that park, so it's, people from as far as the cities and down in Iowa come, come to visit our park, and, uh, it's a jewel of the community, so I was glad to see that happen, it's been a long process.
It has been, it's, it's a great, it was a great day, and the parks will continue, uh, because we're starting at Chesterwoods with the amphitheater this year, so that'll be another venue.
That'll go a lot faster.
Yeah, well, we hope, uh, uh, that'll be very nice, but anyway, so, yeah, uh, all the things that the commissioners have mentioned that, that they are involved in individually and as a group is really important, because it all brings back more expertise to the entire board, so appreciative of all the activities that everybody's bringing in and what they bring back. I think that the big thing that we've all been waiting for, holding our breath, of course, is the legislative outcome, which we will know, and by the end of the week, uh, I assume, uh, and my hope for the legislature is that, is that the two caucuses get together, work out their differences, so that we can get a bonding bill, uh, and a tax bill, so, that's my hope for the legislature. All right, thank you very much, looking for a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
All right, we are adjourned.
We're off, Mike?